So, welcome to the Lake Mills City Council meeting, February 7, 2023. Calling the meeting to order, can we please have a roll call?
Ms. Kurler?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Mrs. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Quinnow?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, can everyone please rise and join us for pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Next is correction and or approval of city council minutes of January 17, 2023, and a special meeting minutes of January 19, 2023. Any comment or discussion?
Mr. Waters, I had one comment.
Yes.
On the minutes for January 19, the last item where it reads motion passes 4-1 with Mr. Fields voting no, it was not in my recollection that that was Mr. Fields' vote, but I didn't have it in my notes, so I don't know if Mr. Fields has any clarification or if anybody else does.
Mr. Fields, do you have that up in front of you by chance?
I did see the same thing. I was going to bring that up also. I don't recall voting that way, but I'd have to go back and watch. I didn't make a note on my notes here.
All right, why don't we, should we just hold that for our next meeting then? So that was the January 19. We'll hold.
So I'll make a motion that we just approve the city council meeting minutes from January 17.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Kurler, second by Ms. Quinnow. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Steve?
Aye.
Pass is 5-0. Thank you.
Do we need a motion to table the others or just can bring it back next time?
Just bring it back next time.
All right, moving to correspondence. Ms. Quinnow?
Can I go last?
Sure.
Thanks.
Mr. Fields?
I had quite a few. Received a call from one of the townships on some direction and options for EMS. I attended a Jefferson County meeting on EMS virtually. I did receive the email on the, from our young student on the elder care, some options to help. Also email on the College Street reconstruction. I did receive three calls about EMS and where it's going. And I sat down with a ladies group in Lake Mills here and had a kind of little roundtable discussion over lunch. And then also received the email from Tom on the Edgerton Milton EMS options that just went forward there. So that takes care of my communications.
Thank you. Ms. Kurler?
I had much the same. I didn't have any phone calls this last period, but I think we all received a couple of communications regarding on-street bike paths, bike lanes that were addressed to both the plan commission and the council.
Okay, in addition to those, I had an email on the Bayberry, the Bartles Channel. Trying to see what the progress is on that. Some tree maintenance questions and the Sandy Beach project. Mrs. Bishop?
Yes, I had some of the same, but I'll list it. I had a correspondence about the construction on College Street, including sidewalks. I had an email about the Edgerton EMS from a town representative. I had an email from a county representative about EMS. I also had an email from a student with a project they had been working on and correspondence tonight about the permits and construction going on in Summer Ridge in Brookstone.
Ms. Quinnow?
Yes, I had the same correspondence with regard to the Edgerton EMS from Tom, as well as College Street question about the sidewalks and concerns with regard to the bike path. The Plan Commission, there was a letter that was addressed to help from the Historical Society, help bring perspective, the sixth grader project, as well as a correspondence from constituent with regard to a possible multifamily construction in Brookstone.
All right, thank you. Let's move on to questions and public comment real quick. "The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you've registered with the city clerk before the meeting's been called to order. The state's open meeting laws discourage action by council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided." All right, thank you. So public comment is open. I think there might be about five people listed is what I heard, so feel free to step
I'll get myself out of the way here, and you'll understand in a minute why I'm here. I'm State Representative Barb Dietrich. It's an honor to represent all of you in Madison, and I thank the council for welcoming me tonight. I am just here dropping in. As most of you know, I really try to work diligently in our communities and try to work across the different levels of government. I'm heartened to hear all of you getting context about EMS, because that's obviously something we're really concerned about in Madison, and I want to personally communicate that to you. It'll be no surprise that we've all been talking about shared revenue, and I know that's a concern. I've been working with other communities in the 38th Assembly District for at least a year on that concern and really bringing it to my leadership's attention. How much that will be is always the big debate. I'm not on the Joint Finance Committee, but please know that I've been advocating for Lake Mills and other municipalities in the 38th to increase shared revenue and how that, what that's going to look like. The soup's still being made. Obviously, that really affects our emergency services, but money is not the only problem, as I'm sure you all know. We have a workforce shortage in the state. That's challenging. I'm really thrilled that Jefferson County has been working hard on this issue and trying to bring all the communities together to discuss this and problem-solve around this, because it is a big problem, and it's statewide, and it looks different here than it does from up north. But it is a concern, and to me, that's a basic mandate of government, is providing those emergency services to constituents. So my door is always open. I welcome hearing from you, either, you know, via email. I'll stop here as I'm, you know, coming to or from the Capitol and gladly chat with any of you, and again, it's an honor to represent you in Madison.
Thank you, Mrs. Dietrich. Any questions?
Thank you for being here.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. My name's Tom Danard. I live at 234 Lake Shore Drive with my wife and children. We represent the third and fourth generation of my family as residents of this address. This property has been in my family for seven decades. I believe you all received the email that I had sent, so thank you for taking time to review that. Is she 18 or he, that baby?
No, but she already interrupts. I'm sorry.
Okay. So our primary concern is the use of the existing driveway and garage with the sidewalk that's planned to be added to the College Street reconstruction from the southern edge of College Street, from St. Francis Xavier Church to Lake Shore Drive. We're concerned that our existing driveway and garage will not be able to be used, as it has been for 100 years. Subsequent concerns include the removal of mature, otherwise healthy trees, a topography in existing structures that will result in unsafe pedestrian route, and additional unnecessary costs to the taxpayer. We were directed to the 2005 nearly 20-year-old comprehensive plan that discusses minor gaps, and it is described as constructing sidewalk in minor gaps when and where practical. I believe the issue dies here. It is impractical, and I don't believe anyone is asking for a sidewalk to be built here. Nor in the sidewalk plan is College Street identified. A long list of other streets are. This leads me to believe that either city staff, outside consultants, or residents nearly 15 years ago, 18 years ago, either purposely omitted it, or it was and is such a non-issue, it never made the report. On page 1-5 on our Section W in regards to minor gaps, "Sidewalk is desirable but not necessary to provide reasonable safe access." This furthers the argument that the document does not instruct a sidewalk to be installed. We've been told it's city policy to implement the sidewalk plan. On page 96, policy to have the comprehensive plan to ensure safe and efficient routes. I'm not sure what isn't safe or efficient about what it currently exists. It stood the test of time. We are not interested in the trees being removed for a future sidewalk. They provide much-needed privacy from the church parking lot and add aesthetics and character to this unique property. It is now changed to the trees being removed because of obstruction to power lines, and they will be removed regardless. To this, I suggest the power pole may be moved to the other side of the street. This seems to be the most practical time to do so, and by doing so, I believe there won't be any trees that need to come down. I also question why power lines aren't buried during these extensive reconstruction projects. These older neighborhoods are much different than some of our newer subdivisions where all the power lines are underground. As we all know, the comprehensive plan is a 30,000-foot view and guideline. It's difficult to apply when you get into nuances and unique properties. Staff and outside consultants have both conceded that it is old, and I think it's in progress of being updated as we speak. The plan works well for new development when there is a blank slate. Developers know what is expected, and people purchasing houses are aware of what they are buying. It does not work well in older, established, and unique neighborhood and properties. My family has made a significant investment in this community. When I purchased this property, there was no sidewalk. This is a historic and unique property in an older and established neighborhood. Precedent has been set to treat these issues on a case-by-case basis. Our ask is simple: please remove the addition of the new sidewalk from the church to Lake Shore Drive from the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Danard. Any questions?
Todd Temporley. Before the 2005 sidewalk plan, the city was pretty much following the Public Works Board ordinance for new sidewalks for existing older streets to be reviewed case by case, and residents were notified through 10 public hearings to give evidence before decisions were made. But then the comprehensive plan came along, which was imposed by the state, and the first plan, they provided grant money to pay consultants for the plans. So we nicknamed it the Wisconsin Planners Association Employment Act and just threw money out at the planners to draw up all of these plans. So even back then, I raised concerns that all these plans would force future city councils to do projects without much public discussion or debate, because it's a done deal. But at the time, staff insisted that it was just a plan for future staff proposals that were supposed to go through the normal proposal process, which included the public works board. So we pretty much rubber-stamped it with little discussion. Fast forward to January 2022, where I found out the council ordered new sidewalks on Marguerite Street despite not going through the public works board for review and a recommendation. I sent an objection email to the council vice president with a copy of the new sidewalk powers defined in the public works board ordinance, so I assumed that email was shared with the rest of the council. And fast forward to the November 2022 public works board meeting, where there was an agenda item to discuss the role of the public works board. Again, I brought up the ordinance clause of new sidewalks, but the council member pushed back and said the council does not have to follow that. And I warned the council member that if items are not discussed at board members before reaching the council or implemented by staff, members of the public regard those items as being done on the table. I assume that discussion was shared at the city council board reported agenda item. Then at the December 2022 public works board meeting, the strand presentation in the College Street rebuild said nothing but change except for stormwater drainage changes. Nothing was said about installing new sidewalks in an area of topography challenges and existing structure close to the right-of-way, and there's been no request for new sidewalks from any local residents, which includes me.
Thank you, Mr. Temporley. Any questions? I have a comment. I am not familiar with any sidewalks that this council passed in 2022. Marguerite, I believe you're referring to, at 2020? January of 2020 was a TAP grant that was passed, and that was reviewed, that was discussed in our council meeting back in 2022, but there was no, there was no action by this council. That was a prior council. And that TAP grant is an 80% federally funded grant?
There's stakes on Marguerite Street for new sidewalks. Ms. Kurler sent an email last January, correct?
Yes, and I believe that is, as Mr. Waters has described, that this council did discuss the TAP grant and applying for a TAP grant, but a prior decision had already been made about which sidewalks.
So who decided whether the new sidewalks would go?
I would have to go back and look at the prior council action.
That was January 2022.
So you're admitting it did not go through public works board?
I don't know if it went through public works board before my time on the council.
Mr. Temporley, are you saying the public works board is somehow, has power over the city council?
Can we pause here for a second? Attorney Drescher?
Thank you.
Maybe, this may not be the appropriate time for a debate. I am familiar with this issue. I believe I've discussed it with a number of people that are in the room right now. Mr. Temporley, do you have anything else to contribute for public comment? I don't want to cut you off at all, but this isn't an agenda item. We're not going to take action on it. Let's have a thorough review of the history before we go forward and comment.
That's a good point.
The power is to say review and recommendation. If you guys bypass our recommendation, that's fine, but like I said, it needs to be review recommendation to give the public a chance to react.
And that was not this council.
Good evening. Mike Niessman. I live on Ferry Drive. First, I'd like to thank you all for your services, long hours. In return, you get the slings and arrows of outraged fortune, and you get listen to codgers like me bloviate. So please know that my comments are respectfully made. I understand and agree with the logic and economics of filling in sidewalk gaps when you're doing street repairs. It just makes sense. But in this particular case, I agree with Mr. Danard's concern regarding the extension of these sidewalks on south side of College. To do so, will, as he pointed out, disturb the integrity of a well-established neighborhood. We will lose more mature trees. Will also increase impermeable surfaces that can commit an increased runoff into the lake. There's already access to Lake Shore Drive and the public pier with the north side of the College Street sidewalk. The safety issue, there's already a crosswalk for the parishioners, many of them elderly, to go from that parking lot to the church. It's hard to believe that anyone would go down that sidewalk, cross the street, and come back up, whether going either direction. Parenthetically, that might be a good place for one of those really great hand-operating, push the button, the yellow flashing sign goes on to warn people, because that is, you know, those are older folks, which I'm approaching rapidly, getting across the street. It might not be a bad idea to have that. So anyway, I think, given our budget crunch, and especially with things like EMS facing us, extending that sidewalk doesn't seem to me the best use of public funds. If I could dial back the microscope a bit, from specific to general, we were at a Plan Commission meeting, and the Meaden-Hunt consultant assuaged concerns of various members about the exact wording of the new comprehensive plan and repeatedly referred to it as the 30,000-foot view and that decision we've made on the ground. I was a mid-level federal government employee for 28 years, and a lot of my job was implementing and interpreting regulations, and I can attest to the power of the plan. Logically, when faced with decisions on the ground, it is correct to adhere to the plan. That's why we have it. But in addition, making exceptions inevitably leads to other parishioners wondering why they didn't get the exception made. So I would ask the council to be very careful and strongly consider sections dealing with future constructions like bike lanes and sidewalks, and start off with wording to effect like, quote, "construction, when practical, will commence only if preservation of neighborhood integrity, opinions of citizens directly impacted by construction, and environmental concerns have been thoroughly considered and addressed." This kind of wording would give primacy to such concerns, and I think, provide those who have to implement the projects not only in necessary guidance, but support in addressing those issues when they have to make these decisions. So again, I very sincerely thank you for all your work.
Thank you, Mr. Niessman. Any questions? Is there one more? All right.
If I'm allowed, President Waters?
Yes.
If I'm allowed, can you hear me?
Sure. Who is it?
This is Steve Danard.
Hey, Steve.
234 Electric Drive. Nice to see you again, Greg.
Go ahead.
Thank you, council, for listening. Thank you, council, for listening to our concerns. I think that they're valid, and looking back, I'd like my son to come back up again and talk again about the previous meeting where they talked about the width of the road and that there was exceptions for older communities or older areas, and the fact that the Plan Commission approved that they should make the road the same width as it was for speed concerns. But my major concerns, I think, and Tom can probably follow up on this if he would, but, you know, my concerns are, again, they've already been listed, that the sidewalk from the church to Lake Shore Drive has never been there. There's no need for it. It's going to obstruct a historic property. It just doesn't make sense that they would do that and cut down those trees. The little bit of buffer that we have between our home, homes, I guess as it is now, and the church parking lot is about the only buffer that we have anymore, and there's considerable traffic on Wednesday evenings and Saturday evenings and Sundays. And I think that that needs to be taken into consideration, but I know that Tom has done a lot of research and listened to the Plan Commission meetings about the fact that there are, I guess, I don't know what I would call them, I guess I'd call them the ability to make changes to whatever this comprehensive plan is or whatever, because it just, it makes no sense, and, you know, I obviously oppose this, and I'd like to thank the council members for listening to me, and any questions that any of them have, I'd be very interested in talking to them in more detail about it. I've owned that property before my son bought it for me for 23 years. My father owned it for 40-some years, and before that, there was only one other person that owned that property. And it's, it's an iconic property, and I just do not see any sense in destroying the aesthetics of the south side of College Street. Thank you, council. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Danard. And I know that there was a discussion on the width of College Street in the Public Works Board meeting, correct? Yeah. And so I know that that was discussed and addressed. Go ahead.
I am Steve Holman, 410 College Street here in Lake Mills. I'm on the Lake Mills Plan Commission. Just speaking to this issue, I'm in the works of preparing an agenda item to address the older part of town and to possibly create an overlay district so that we can adjust some of the zoning code based on fairness. And what I mean by that is, you have brand-new subdivisions where our new comprehensive plan makes a lot of sense. Everybody knows what they're getting into based on covenants and things regarding subdivisions. However, the code, as it has changed and evolved, now is reapplied to the existing part of town where some of those houses were 100-plus years, 100-plus years old, and I just think there's a fairness issue there with the zoning code. So that's what the premise is. Here's just another example. I actually played on that property, mind you, it dates me a little bit, but 50 years When it was the Armentale property, I've been involved with that part of Lake Shore Drive with numerous friends, and I have a bicycle. We bike that part of town, walk that part of town. I'm not truly familiar with the amount of traffic there as far as when church goes. A lot of my friends are Catholics and go to that church, but I'm not totally aware of the volume, but it's just never seemed to be a problem. I've been on the Plan Commission 23 years. I've never had a comment. I know just about everybody here. Like council members get memos from people. People are talking to me about this all the time, so hopefully I'll be bringing something to the Plan Commission and then subsequently the council so that we can discuss this further and bring some element of fairness to some of these parts of town. And just for the record, I'm opposed to the sidewalk also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holman. Any questions? Anyone else? All right, public comment is closed. Let's move on to city manager's report. Mr. Daley?
All the reports included in your packet. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. The only correction I would note is we actually received a, Director Hermanson received an email from the DOT earlier today, and it has, the ATV route has not yet been formally approved from the DOT, so it is still under their review. So we are still waiting for that formal approval before any signs can be installed there. We don't anticipate, we're not anticipating issues with it, but they have not given their final sign-off yet.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
I had a comment on your monthly report. I guess I just wanted to highlight the recognition that Bill Keisling received, and maybe you or Paul could talk about that a little bit more.
Yes, it was actually, it was a surprise when I was notified by the email, but it was for outstanding performance of an operator. He was humbled by it, I believe, and excited to receive that award, and we're quite proud that his efforts have been recognized and that we have recognition of our talented staff here at the city.
Great, thank you. That was really nice to see, and thanks, Bill, for your service.
Any other comments? I'd like to thank you for researching the We Energy situation that happened when they posted the advisory for everyone to shut down their temperatures or bring down their temperatures, and thank you for looking at that. Sounds like there's a corrective action that's local here in Jefferson County in the future, so.
Yep, it's looking like they were previously approved for around a $410 million project in Jefferson and Walworth for some natural gas storage, and had that been constructed at that time in December, they wouldn't have needed to issue that order, but they're hoping it's completed this year or next year to improve the reliability of their system.
All right. And congratulations to Mr. Kiesling as well. Yeah.
I will pass that along.
Any other questions? Mr. Fields, just jump in if you have anything, by the way.
Will do. Thank you.
All right. Moving on, council members' board reports and acceptance of minutes from the Police and Fire Commission of November 17, 2022, Plan Commission of November 2, 2022, Housing Authority of September 27, 2022. Is there any comment from any of the council members in any of those? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and accept those into our minutes. Council business. First thing on the agenda is Mr. Neesman. We heard him speak and he left already. But I would like to appoint Mr. Neesman to the Zoning Board of Appeals. He has been the alternate and as an alternate, he was actually appointed to one of the officer positions. I think it's fitting that we move him into one of the regular slots that just became open. So that's my recommendation. The term ends in 2025. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
That's 5-0. Thank you.
Mr. Waters, can I get a motion for that?
Okay.
To confirm your appointment?
I'll make a motion to confirm the appointment of Michael Neesman to the Zoning Board of Appeals, changing his role from alternate to regular member. Second?
Motion by Ms. Curler, second by Mrs. Bishop. Again, all those in favor, make it official.
Aye.
5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for stepping in there. I appreciate it.
Is it Catherine who? Mrs. Bishop, second. Thank you.
Yes. Next on the agenda is ordinance 1252. Misty, can you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance 1252, amending City of Lake Mills ordinance, section 660-44, official zoning map, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, parcel identification number 24607131214002, owner, Kingbird Real Estate 2 LLC, 397 East Harrina Park Road, Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
Thank you. Can we have a motion?
I think this is first reading, is that right?
That's correct.
Oh, excuse me.
That's correct.
All right. Staff comment?
There is a planner's memo that provides some details on this item in your packet. The Plan Commission is recommending approval of this. Mr. Malone is present here representing the project. If you have any questions of him. Other than that, if there's any specific questions, we are happy to answer them.
Any questions? Yes.
I just have some questions about the facade signs and maybe one is for Mr. Malone and one is for city staff, but for Mr. Malone, I guess I wanted to just understand if those facade signs are lighted or not lighted, the ones that'll be up on the sides of the building.
The ones on the building will be lighted.
They will be lighted?
Yeah.
Okay. And then it looked like there was plan to be on all four sides, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I guess what I'm just wondering and if we can make sure we have a good understanding and for our citizens, if the planned development district is going to allow a larger height for the building than would otherwise be required, then that means those signs will be a little higher in the air than people would otherwise be used to seeing. And so I just want to make sure that we have a good understanding. Does the city ordinance have any regulations on the height of those facade signs or is it just sort of presumed that they'll be on whatever height the building is? If that makes sense.
My understanding of the code is that it is allowed up to the height of the building as you're stating and there is, that's one of the requests in the PDD overlay is that the height is higher. The other concern being like mumminessence and I believe it is complied, their plans do comply with ordinance in that regard. Yeah, that's the extent of the information I have for you right now.
Okay. And I'm not serially raising an objection, but just wanting to make sure that we understood how those two work together, so thank you for being here.
Ms. Curler, if I may, my understanding, look at the renderings, was that really the parapets on the corners came to the 54 feet and so the physical wall of the building wasn't necessarily that high.
Right.
I don't know that you get a facade sign at the height of the parapet. That's just what I noted in the drawings that I saw, but certainly I would look forward to discussing it further or when we come to a decision in that debate.
And thanks for pointing that out because I think you're right. There's only some parts of the building that are at that maximum height and the top of the fourth floor generally is not quite that high.
Do we know if the lighting for the parking lot is going to be in the front or in the back?
The parking lot itself or the lighting?
Mm-hmm. So like, is it going to be along Highway A and, or I'm sorry, County A, or is it going to be back behind by the trailer area? Maybe I missed the picture.
We probably should have suspended the rules. I'll make a motion to suspend the rules. Do I have Mr. Malone to answer our questions? Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So there's parking lot all the way around the building and so there'll be parking lot lights out all the way around the building as well, both front and back.
Okay. And my only concern with that is that parking lot lights can be problematic for neighboring, like neighbors that are across the street, there are people that live there. So I see that there are trees. I'm not sure how good the trees are going to block that light, but it's just something I'm wondering about if there's going to be any consideration for residents around that area.
Yeah, there is a lot of screening with shrubbery and the parking lot lights themselves are downward facing. They don't face out any, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we do have, the code does have requirements for light spillover off of the property and their photometric plan that they submitted does comply with that code, so it should minimize any light spillover onto adjoining properties or light being a nuisance to neighboring properties.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Oh, I thought you were, you're turning off, not turning on. Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. So that was the first reading and the second reading will be at our second meeting in February and then the third reading and vote will take place if everything stays on schedule, the first meeting in March. All right. Next is a presentation on staffing study from McMahon Associates Incorporated. I think we have some guests here, so. Any staff comment before we get started?
No, sir. We're happy to turn it over to them.
All right.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. My name is Lori Gauz. I am a Senior Public Management Specialist at McMahon Associates and with me tonight is Paul Benning. He is a Public Management Specialist and Jeff Romer, who is the project manager, program manager for our Public Safety and Municipal Management Group at McMahon. So the purpose of our being here tonight is to talk about the staff analysis study that we did. First of all, I'd like to start by introducing the team or showing you the team members. I was a project manager, so I oversaw both of the portions of the study that was done. Paul Benning worked with the staff here on the project as well as Al Schaefer and Brian Zaleski and Jeff worked on the police department portion of it and Jeff also worked with Robert Whitaker and Kevin Beers on the emergency management portion of that project. So the purpose of the project was to review the current conditions, staffing conditions, evaluate of future service demands that you have on the city and do an analysis of opportunities for operational changes. We presented this in two separate studies and the reason that we did that is, first of all, at the request of the city and second, it was important because there was two separate issues that, more so, that you have with the emergency services. You have big decisions that you have to make in the future and how to provide those services. So that portion was already presented to you and so tonight, we're just here to talk about the rest of the city staff. So what we did is we began with our planning and collection of data. Paul and I met with the city manager, the city clerk and the city attorney back in September and we had a very good meeting. I felt Paul and I walked away with a good feeling and understanding of what the expectations were of us for this project. So we collected some data from the staff, then also we just asked them, what is it you want as a result of this study? And they wanted to be able to gain retention and recruitment of employees. It was startling to hear the amount of employee turnover you had in 2022 and that the stress of that was put on several staff members. There was also a concern of being more competitive in wages and benefits in order to recruit those employees and retain employees, identify any deficiencies in staffing levels, create a playpan, a pay plan, excuse me, with incentives and merit pay where there was none before. So what we did is came up with what we thought would be a good working tool and I'll get to that in a moment. We were also asked or were told that the city is considering creating a new vacation policy and then we looked at existing benefits and created a formal employee valuation process and looked at identifying efficiencies in staffing versus contracting. Next slide. So what we continue to do as we're collecting the data for the project is that we, first of all, reviewed or received all the wages and salaries, current wages and salaries of all the staff of the employees. Then what we did is we created a job-related questionnaire to give to all those employees and this would be to everyone except the fire and EMS and police. The police department, we did not give the questionnaire to. The police were studied separately with Paul, or excuse me, Jeff and Brian. So the goal of this employee questionnaire or job-related questionnaire was to gather feedback from the staff to identify the strengths, weaknesses, challenges and opportunities. And I got to tell you, the results of the, that we got from the questionnaire from the staff was very helpful in our, preparing our recommendations for this study. So we received, 31 employees responded back with feedback and Al Schaefer worked in that portion of the project and collected all the data and organized it and then we came up with some recommendations for you. Then another piece that we also did is we did a comparison of 15 peer communities. Those communities were selected by your city administration staff as well as our project team and we came up with 15 communities that we thought we could use that in comparison. And 14 of those communities responded, which I thought was very good because not, you know, whenever you do a survey, you throw a survey out there, not everyone responds or they get too busy and backburner it and don't respond on time. So the results, I thought, were very good. Next slide? Okay, it's already there. Nope, go back to the one with the map on, please. Okay, so then we started diving into it and what we did at this point is we took a look at the location of the city. It brings both opportunities and challenges. We feel that Lake Mills is poised for growth. Even tonight at this meeting, you had some citizens that came and had concerns about how the city is developing in certain areas and what changes are happening. As the city grows, you always see that. I always say that's like growing pains for a community and that's a good thing. You want to have growing pains. You want to get through those even though sometimes those obstacles can be hard to face. So we feel that Lake Mills is poised to growth. You have a very beautiful community, one that you should be very proud of and it offers manageable commute times for both, to both Madison and Milwaukee areas. And based on your 2009 city comprehensive plan, the population is estimated to grow by 7,000 or to nearly 7,000 in 2030. And assuming that that estimate is accurate, this will have an impact on your staffing for the future. Challenges, it brings a challenge by being located between two of Wisconsin's populated metropolitan areas and that is the competition for labor. And I think last year you were a witness to that as people were, may have been looking for changes and were able to find employment elsewhere. And then in 2022, as I said, you just experienced those retirements as well that you may not have been anticipating and the resignations resulted in a loss in shortage of manpower in several of those departments. Next slide, please. So then looking at the wages and benefits. McMahon conducted a survey of those selected peer communities to not only capture the wages and salary information, but a number of the benchmark communities with a number of the benchmark positions, but also the benefits in those positions. The salary used benchmarks positions for comparisons and in our opinion, these positions offer very little variation in tasks and duties and responsibilities between those organizations. Plus, we added some positions that the city had experienced turnover in so we could get a better idea of what comparisons are out there and why those individuals may have left those positions. The city administration expressed the possibility of creating a better vacation policy, so we looked at that and gained some information. And through the surveys that we did with the peer municipalities, we found that Jefferson and Milton use a paid time off policy and you might want to use that as well as moving forward. That would be a good resource for the city to use if you decide to pursue that option. Then we noted some other findings in the analysis that we did and that would be job-related questionnaire. The library expansion was highlighted by several staff members and anytime you have reorganization, many facility changes and operations and facility utilizations should be looked at. It may not be a high priority now, but it's something that you should address in the future as you plan and the city does grow. And then we also looked at overtime and we took the 2022 overtime and took a step back and just looked at it to see if there was anything that we could garner out of that information to include in this study. And basically, it was a result of situations that may have happened and every year, those situations you don't budget for or you can't plan for, but certain situations do happen and you just have to adjust accordingly. But staffing levels and planning and organization control can assist in the overtime from being a fiscal concern. Then we looked at the police department and as I mentioned, Jeff and Brian worked on this piece and they met with the police chief and took a step back and looked at the organization of the police department, how many calls they have, what types of calls, the shifts that are out there, the staff structure. And they also looked at the school resource officer position, which we feel has a benefit to the department and both the department and the school district by building that bridge between the police department and the youth and families in the community. There is a challenge in this department, especially at times when only one officer or supervisor is on duty and being able to commit to the time and effort to thoroughly investigate all calls for services while still maintaining a routine and proactive patrol. patrol presence. And also that there is no dedicated investigator or detective positions within the department. Now we come to our recommendations. Now, these recommendations, we feel, may benefit the city. And our job was to look at opportunities for operational changes. So these are areas that we felt should be considered. It's recommendations. We're not saying that you must consider them. And of course, this, some of these changes have some budgetary and financial impact that you'll need to address and you may need to phase in, or do some of these changes through attrition as some of these positions become vacant. So again, the job-related questionnaire, the staff had a strong part in putting some of these thoughts that we had together for us by giving some of the, the comments that they had in, in this questionnaire. And with any reorganization, finding the right balance and adjustment to meet the current and future needs can take a great deal of time and energy. And what activities or operations are contracted must be considered. And with that, the following, we feel, are areas that you could, should consider looking at. The IT department, there seemed to be some inconsistencies with contracted IT service, which created a challenge with some of the staff. And we suggested that maybe taking a look more at the responsibilities of the cable TV operator position and having that position address more of these IT activities. And then have only one, one third-party network provider that works with all departments and then reports directly to that cable TV operator position. The technology, we thought all departments should be involved in examining the use of technology and how it can improve their operations. By providing more technology options for your customers will reduce staff time and make it easier for the customer to get the information that they, they are looking for. The HR department, this seemed to be, in 2002 especially, a struggle because of the amount of turnover that you did have. Currently, that HR responsibilities are managed by the city attorney, the city clerk, and other staff members. And we suggested maybe taking a look at that HR responsibility and creating an HR specialist or director, however you want to title that position. And we give you a sample of what that might look like as an attachment to the report. But this doesn't mean then that, we didn't say eliminate the city attorney position in our report, but, you know.
Just a cool story.
But it's something you, you may want to look at as you take those responsibilities away. Obviously, it's going to give more time for the city attorney to concentrate on other important issues that should be addressed in the city. You can continue to have the city attorney as an employee of the city. And maybe, maybe as you grow, you look at different things. Maybe there's an opportunity as the current city attorney, if you would vacate the position, that you could then consider maybe contracting. So just opportunities that you can look at in the future. The building inspector and zoning administrator was another one that was talked about in the past, whether to continue contracting or bring that in-house. And it sounds like in your 2023 budget, you have that in-house, and you're currently looking for, to fill that position, which is good. The utility billing services, that's another area that you couldn't consider instead of continuing an in-house contract that out with your local WPPI services. Forestry seemed to come up in the questionnaire, that it's, some of the forestry activities are done by a number of various departments. And it was, one of our considerations is to designate a forestry crew, which kind of leads into the next bullet point, which is the public works department. Currently, everything falls under one umbrella. And we suggested maybe separating that out into two and have a public works department, which takes care of street parks, cemetery, and forestry. And then have a utility department that would oversee the water, electric, and wastewater operations. And again, this is something that you can consider as the city grows and maybe also through attrition, when someone vacates a position would be the time to then look at separating that responsibilities out further. Next slide would be the creation of an employee training and orientation program. This would be a great tool for new employees so that they understand the expectations in the operations of their position for the city. Also for training and certifying specific departments, it, it's very important to keep some, some certifications up to date. For example, your DPW, they have chainsaws that they use. Make sure that they are properly trained to use those types of equipment. Combined spaces, active shooters. That's something that I feel should be trained in all departments, along with some CPR training. That's, those are important things that sometimes are overlooked in communities. You get too busy doing your job, that you don't think of those things. But those are real things that can happen on, on any given day. So those are things that we would suggest that you continue to look at as far as employee training and orientation programs. Communication, that's another one that seemed to be brought up numerous times in the questionnaire. And again, we feel that effective communications increase the employee knowledge and improving of the operations. And it's important to increase that communication between facilities, that you may not always see those staff members on a day-to-day basis. And then also to increase the communications to the public and make them aware of announcements that might be out there. Then the next recommendation we have is to establish an employee performance program. And this is one that we feel would be a great program to establish. It's a great tool for both management and employees. It would keep, it would help with potential merit and performance increases and set goals for future performance measures. And we put together a sample of what that employee performance program might look like. Again, what we're putting in the, this report as attachments are suggestions. And it's something, at least to give the city administration a tool and, and something to look for and, and you can use. We would hope that you use some of these examples that we have for you, or take them and tweak them and, and create your own. And then the creation of the pay plan, that was something I talked with Drake about. And we kind of, at first, as a team at McMahon, looked at, well, we talked about, should we create a pay plan or give examples from other communities? And we did do some work for the city of Columbus this last year. We did an operation and compensation study. So then I, I took that compensation piece and took a look at the work we did for Columbus and created a pay plan example for you. And I did go as far as taking your positions that you have and the current salaries and try to get them as you compared them to those peer communities and get them to that midpoint level, with the goal being that everyone should be at that midpoint and then advance and, and improve as you go. So that can be looked at. I'm not saying that what we provided to you has to be the answer. It's not up to us to, to provide or, or establish the appropriate salaries. That's up to the city to determine. So, but at least we gave you an idea so that you can get there. And also, what I did is put together how that might impact you financially. And obviously, it's not a bullet that you wanted to swallow at the first year, but you may have to phase it in over, over a course of several years. And then, once you have the program going, I think it's, it's a great tool to keep yourself current. It will be great to use for recruitment purposes and retention purposes. It gives the employees something to say, okay, this, this is a fair salary range. And if they're comfortable with that midpoint and just cost of living adjustments, you know, or do they want to do some improvements and, and get some increases in pay based on their merit? So that was probably one of our bigger recommendations for you. And then the last recommendation that we do have is the police department. With a creation of one full-time police officer who would take on that school resource officer role and then extra patrol coverage was one of our recommendations. And then to create one part-time investigator position. I understand that your police chief has also talked to you about hiring two full-time officers, and that's something that you're looking to consider. So, and then the last bullet that we had as a recommendation was to create a formal employment agreement for the police chief. And, and more so, it's just spelling out more in detail wages and benefits of that position. So to summarize, we feel that the city desires the management of services to be balanced efficiently, and that's how well resources are being used effectively. How weak a process procedures produces the desired outcome and productivity, how much is produced based on the capacity to produce. So in our opinion, also due to the managed, the manpower shortage in 2022, a number of the develop, or departments did struggle to maintain the level of services, basically due to employee turnovers. And then once, once you brought somebody on, you also had that training period, which, you know, may at times take away from what needs to be done. So that can cause some hardship on the staff. So when we say you are understaffed, I think it would be fair to say it may be just more so because of the shortage that you had in this last year. And as you fill those positions, you can get back to the level that you should be at. So continuing to communicate with staff would be another area that we want, we would suggest that you can do. And then looking at ways to streamline, several of the staff, staff responded to the questionnaire that the employees work well across the departments and support each other, which is really good to hear. So I think if you can continue to look at ways and, and share with the staff, maybe have a workshop one day where the council meets with this, with staff members and just talks about, you know, all-staff meetings, maybe twice a year, and talk about things that are happening in the city and way that, ways that things can be improved or enhanced upon. Those are good things to do. And lastly, the city staff did mention, and I wanted to point out, that communications has increased since the hiring of city manager Daley. So just a compliment to him that we did get some comments from several staff members that they have seen that increased and, and moving in a positive direction that way. Any questions?
Thank you for the study. My mic is not on. Thank you. I, I think you hit some of the hot points that, that as a council, we've discussed in the last year and a half. Paid time off was one of those things. Staffing versus contracting is a, is a topic. And performance-based pay, of course, is, is something that we've, we've been talking about as a council. As I look at this longer view, the, the full report, there's a lot of information, some dollar amounts that are thrown out there. I guess what I'm looking at is what is the full financial impact of, of implementing all these things? And I'm not sure if we're going to need some help figuring that out, or, or staff is tasked with that. But I, I think that's important for us to understand what, what the dollar amount is. So then we can start looking at, you know, this is number one priority, this is number two, and this is number three. Like you said, it's something that we can't probably do in year one. It may be something that we need, need to phase over several years, maybe five years even. I don't know how long it would, it'd be something we'd have to look at. But, but any thoughts on, on how to arrive at that, that dollar amount that, that if we implemented everything, what, what would that cost?
Well, if you would, I, I believe in the, the report, we gave you a couple of scenarios. If you were to get everyone first to that midpoint, that would be probably the highest dollar amount that you would have to achieve. You may want to step, take a step back first, though, and get those, those comparisons of those communities, or from those communities and those benchmark positions, and bring those staff members that are below up to that midpoint. Maybe that would be your first hurdle that you take. And then look at the rest of the staff members and make some increments. Maybe you do it in phases where you go 20%. The next year, you do another percentage until you get to the point where you want to be at.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Yes?
Thank you again for this very thorough, all of you thorough, report. I just wondered about the IT and the tech information that you shared. And, correct me if I'm wrong, the IT service you recommended be contracted or is contracted?
Then, that you, no, not necessarily, kind of twofold. So you would have somebody that in, in-house, that would be the go-to person for troubleshooting, and then have that support for those problems that cannot be solved in-house. And that would be a contracted service, but not have multiple based on locations, just have one. And then have that one staff member trained to respond to whatever it might be, if it's at the library, or if it's down at the DPW garage, or wherever it might be.
Okay, and then the difference between that and the technology department?
Technology, we're just saying, looking at different technologies that might be out there to find, to use to improve or enhance the, the services that you're, you're looking at.
Okay, so like, to, to find tools to make it easier to do what everybody needs, like, constituents want to have a fast, easy way to get in touch with public works or something, and a telephone is not always, okay. I get what you're saying now. I was confused by those two things, and I was trying to think, they're kind of the same thing, but, so that makes sense to me. And then I kind of wanted to follow up on what Mr. Waters was saying with regard to staffing. I, I don't want to lose our, our district attorney at all. I'm not saying he's going anywhere. He's, he's.
District attorney is a city.
Oh, I'm sorry, city attorney. I, I really see you highly. But in general, like the HR piece, you know, you noted in your report that to do something as, as extensive as an HR department takes a lot of time. And creating, as you said, the employment training, or the employee training program for each element. I mean, we're talking about putting together, what are the, what are the expected duties for each position for every, that seems like a lot. And to me, that feels like that might be more than one person. What are your thoughts on that?
You would probably have more than one person as you grow, yes. And I, I think if you could start with that director, and then, again, this is another one, as, as you can phase in, that cost as you, as you continue to grow and, and get that department established. But maybe the first year, you just start with that. And then maybe have somebody come in at a part-time level. It doesn't necessarily have to be a full-time. There's a cost savings, you know, get them below that 20 hours a week, and you can save a lot of money and, and benefits, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think on the HR aspect, I think the, the idea in my role, in my mind, would be if we did go down that path, to find a position that can alleviate the, the demands that HR puts on our city. that can alleviate the, the demands that HR puts on our city clerk and our city attorney that have multiple other job duties more specific to those roles, and that HR is, is kind of, is, is an add-on to those. And so it's, it's, it may not be a clean break from, from what we're doing now, but, you know, any capacity to alleviate some of those, those duties, you know, job description review, recruitment, onboarding, things of that nature, that they may still have a role in, but would not be burdened with the entirety of that, of those functions. So that, that's something to consider as, as we look at, how do we gain, where, where is the best use of our current employees' time, and how can we free up their ability to focus on, on tasks that are the most beneficial to, to our operations?
That's kind of what I was thinking, too, is just taking what I know is overwhelming to our current city staff and whittling it down so that it's specific to different areas. Like I know that the city clerk and the city attorney are doing all of those HR tasks. If we were to put them into one position, is that something that we could do even by 2025? That's, those are the kinds of things I'm thinking about. So, thank you.
Ms. Crowell?
Thank you for the presentation and the report. On the technology, I, similar to Ms. Quidnow, I, I see that, you know, a lot of overlap with the idea of an IT department, whether it's in-house or some contracted services, but I really like the idea that you've made a recommendation for our whole, you know, team of staff to be looking at, you know, software or other kinds of tools, technology that they can use to make their lives more efficient, their work more efficient. You know, there was, I think there was some things mentioned in the report, like paying by credit card online for services, that could, that'll be a convenience for our citizens, that'll be a time savings for our staff, so that's kind of a win-win. But it does require somebody that has a little bit of technology knowledge and IT knowledge to know how to look for what are the best tools, and then how to troubleshoot those tools if they're not working, or how to set them up. So I, I thought that was really good. I had a few questions, I guess, or comments on the pay plan and police department things. One was, I know you said this pay plan was just an example, and then the department heads, it looked like you had plugged in, you know, our department had categories. How did you determine what level those should be at? Was that just, just a suggestion, or was that based on other municipalities? Because there were some where I thought, well, maybe the number of direct reports that they had, or their scope of responsibility should be a factor in terms of what level they're placed at.
Sure. They were, we, I placed them in based on some comparisons from the other communities that we, we collected that information from. And then the, the spreadsheet, which I also shared with Drake, so he, he has that. Moving forward, if you use it, he's, all the numbers are in there, all the cells are formatted, so all he's got to do is start plugging stuff in. But each level is by 6%. So as you start with one, that's the lowest level, and some of the, the, what do you want to call it, the, the category, so there was five of them that I had, and then some had one to 14, you had to go down that far, you know. So in administration, it started out with the, the clerks up on top, and the, and on the bottom was the city manager. So you had to have that many levels to get to that high amount. So, and it was just a matter of putting them in whichever level compared to what the other communities had, just to try to get you up to where other communities were in comparison.
So a couple of questions, I guess, related to the police department. Where do the, our two civilian police personnel fit? I mean, like, I didn't see them in the play, pay plan, and I didn't know if that was maybe just because you weren't including the police department, but we do have two clerical dispatch, you know, employees, and it seemed like it would be good to, you know, put them in with some of the other administrative staff in terms of people who have similar types of duties, but maybe for a different department.
And you can do that. I didn't include them because basically it was the information that I received from the city at the time. We asked the, the staff to give us the wages in, in, of each one of those positions. I didn't ask for the police department, that's why it wasn't included.
Okay, okay.
But it can definitely, those should be included in whatever category that, that they belong in.
And then my final question is just about your recommendation for a formal employment agreement for the police chief. I think in your report, you said that that's kind of a industry practice, so is, that would not be the recommendation for the other departments necessarily, but that's just something in the police law enforcement world, that that's a common practice?
Oh, Jeff's up, he's, he's anxious to speak on this one.
Yeah, the issue with the agreement for a police chief, and it's similar with fire chief, too, depending on the situation, you're not in this situation fire-wise, but you are in law enforcement. You have a, you have a, a contract with a, with a local, so you, you are organized, you have an organized unit in the police department, and what tends to happen in cities on a regular basis is your police chief gets confused, because one minute he's told he's following the benefits that are in the contract that the officers have, and the next minute he's told he's not, he's following the benefits that the rest of the city has. So in our experience, it's a lot easier if you have an agreement put together that outlines where, where each of those takes place, and where, you know, do the, are there PTOs because the contract has them, or are there not PTOs, that type of thing, just listing the benefits specifically for the police chief.
Okay, thank you. And so it sounds, if I'm hearing you right, it sounds like it's, it's somewhat unique by virtue of the fact that the workforce is unionized, and so to provide clarity for the chief.
Correct. So he's overseeing an agreement, you know, a bargaining agreement that he has to follow, and his officers and everybody beneath him are part of that. So their, their salary schedule's different, different than the rest of the city. So it's just clarification on where that, that chief actually fits.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Fields?
No, I'm just following along. My big thing was what you started out with, with just knowing what our total costs are going to be for the options.
Great, thank you. Anything else? All right, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
I wonder if we could just have staff talk about next, what is, Mr. Daley sees kind of next steps for, now that we've had a little chance to digest this?
Yep. So I think next steps is, will largely be, will largely be staff-driven here, is we'll take a comprehensive look at the, the pay plan as established, take a look at where employees are currently slotted in it, make sure that we think it accurately represents, you know, Lake Mills specifically, from an internal perspective. I'll meet with the police chief as well to discuss where to slot in non-union employees. There's a process to, for us to determine where, where in the schedules we would think that the employees should be, and then try and figure out if there are, identify where there might be priorities. Are there areas that we are more deficient in than others? Are there areas that need more attention than others? And identifying, are there areas we want to focus on first? There's a, there's a minimum, a midpoint, and a maximum, right? There, there may be, I believe, in my, my first review of it, there are some employees that are well beneath, that are beneath the minimum, aren't, aren't in the pay plan, aren't within where the pay plan would put them right now. Those may be a higher priority. There's some that are further, that are further away than others from compare, the comparable benchmark communities that are telling us that they're more out of market than others. So do we, do we start there, to protect, you know, look at what resources we think will be available, and what resources it would take to do everything we'd like to do, and then work backwards from there as to what options exist to still create betterment, but achieve where we want to be over time. So I think it's going to start with, at the department head level, discussing the findings of this, reviewing the specific positions and where they're slotted in, and then identifying the priorities of where we need to look first, that we are most efficient in, to ensure that we are paying, compensating our employees competitively to make sure that we can retain and recruit talented people.
Any other questions? So, time-wise, in getting our arms around the total price and putting priorities on things, what timeframe do you think we'd be, be looking at for, for some of this information?
I think, you know, we're going to have, we'll, likely by the summer, we'll need to start having conversations about this in preparation for, for the budget coming up, as, as the picture of the 2024 budget becomes clearer. So I think early summer, we start having some conversations again on, do we want to do things immediately and amend our current budget, ensuring that we, acknowledging that that will create a obligation for the, for the next budget? Or do we, do we look to tackle this first in, in 2024 as part of that budget process? So I think early summer, we'll need to, to put together, staff will need to put together something for the council to take a look at as far as implementation options, and how we can work to address some of the deficiencies that have been marked in the report.
There's probably some easy pick-offs that can be accomplished very rapidly as well, so, okay. Anything else?
Just a thought, a thing, and this, I don't know how your brain will tackle this, Mr. Daley, but I think for us to have like a high-level idea of what your, you know, like, how do you see doing this over, say, the next five years, like, sort of what would be generally kind of some of the things that we'd be, we'd be doing at a very high level of implementation, and then we can gradually, you know, you can gradually be working on those, you know, step by step, then we can all, and, and staff as well, can kind of get a feel for what to expect out of what we're going to do with this information.
All right. Is that good? Sounds great. Let's move on. Item D is Resolution 23-5. Misty, can you read that?
Resolution 23-5, resolution declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures from proceeds of borrowing.
All right, can we have a motion?
I move to accept Resolution 23-5, resolution declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures from proceeds of borrowing. Second.
Motion by Ms. Quidnow, second by Mrs. Bishop. City staff discussion?
This, sorry, Sam.
No, go right ahead.
This resolution, essentially, we have projects that are upcoming that we, that we may borrow for, and we may incur costs for them prior to obtaining any, any funds that we would from a bonding or a local borrow. So this, this resolution before you does not commit you to borrowing funds, but it does allow you to reimburse yourselves for any cash that we may expend on those projects earlier than when we have that cash on hand from those borrowings. So it allows us to add those expenditures to the, to the borrows that we would incur so that we can make, we can front the dollars earlier to, to get going on some of these projects, and then make ourselves whole once the, the borrowings have been made, if, if they are.
Any questions?
So, I mean, College Street is on here. Do we need to have further discussion about that, since it's come up so often and is clearly a point of contention? I just want to bring it up since it's listed specifically, people have addressed it specifically tonight. I mean, that project is underway, as I understand it, Mr. Daley, so have we already expended some of those funds?
It's been, it's under design. It's, it's, it's been designed, essentially. Documents have been created, should be delivered to the, to the city in the next day or two, so that it can be on the Polo Works Board agenda for a recommendation. So the project's been designed, it has not been bid, it has not been awarded. So it's, it's in the approved capital improvement plan as, as a project, so it's, it's approved as part of that, but we have not contracted with anybody to move forward with that project. So we, it, it, yes, it is a project, it's, it's one we anticipate completing, it's fully designed and, and ready to be bid, and, and, and ready to be awarded after bidding has had, we found the lowest responsible bidder. But we haven't, that hasn't occurred yet.
And that was going to be kind of my next statement to you. I mean, my understanding, when we spoke last week about this specifically, was that the capital improvement plan, which included College Street and the sidewalks specifically, was previously approved by council, and I think we do that, what, early in the year, each year? So, I mean, it sounds like the decision has already been made, I just wanted to bring it up since it is specifically listed, and we have had a lot of discussion about it from our constituents.
So it was approved in August during the budget discussions?
That, excuse me, that's my understanding, during the capital improvement plan, that we approved, yeah, this year, or last year.
Yeah, approved as a project, you know, until that document goes out for bid and that contract is awarded, you, you have discretion over whether to delay or, or, or not, not do the, not do the project. We've anticipated for a couple of years now doing the project, so usually design starts the year prior, so in the, would have been in the 2022 budget, the, the initial work would have, would have started to, to get going on that, to make sure we were ready in 2023. So the, the project is approved as part of the CIP, I, the, the city council has options available to it if it, if it, if it desires, but staff is operating under the, under the assumption that that project will occur. And it will be ready, it'll be, it'll be at Polo Works Board for, 95% plans will be at Polo Works Board for authorization, a recommendation authorized to bid on the 14th, and then it will come to the city council for final authorization to bid the project on the 21st.
So how does this work? Do we go to bond for the full amount? Because there's a lot of projects that are, that are still very much in, very much up for debate, I guess, like the, the Parks Building at Sandy Beach, the concessions, it's listed as concession stand for 1.7 million. Composting, that's been in public works for, for many, many years. We haven't got a recommendation on that quite yet. The TAP grant, I believe some of that, we, we get back through federal funds.
Yeah.
So how, how does that work?
So, no, we don't, we don't, when we go out to borrow, we don't borrow for the entirety of the CIP. Sam can jump in a little bit here, but we will borrow for, the projects we know are going to happen, we will, we will borrow for those, but for projects that are, that we may, that we may get to, or have been in the CIP year over year and have been kind of pushed back, we don't, we don't borrow for those anticipating that they'll happen, because we, we recognize we're not at a point for being 95% certain that, that project is going to occur. We don't want to, we don't want to borrow funds and levy to pay debt service on those, on those borrowed funds for a project that doesn't, that doesn't happen.
If I recall, from last year, we had a robust discussion on borrowing, and it was several different agenda items that we evaluated, and one of them on the composting, we specifically did not approve, so then that reduced the overall borrowing. So we did kind of look at them project by project when it came to the point of actually, you know, approving a borrowing, you know, or, or agreeing to borrow money. And if I'm understanding this document, and Section 7 in specific, this is, we're, we're, adopting or proposing to adopt this resolution to comply with a treasury regulation that says that we may do this, and it doesn't obligate us to do the projects or the borrowing or the expenditures, but it's just an important public notice, it seems to me.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, and from, from the staff perspective, as far as like road reconstruction projects and that, it is beneficial to us that when it is approved in the CIP, that we, that we do proceed with the project, because we, we do start incurring expenses on those projects as we, from a road reconstruction standpoint, we begin. road reconstruction standpoint, we begin surveying and designing and getting, so we're sure that we'll be able to bid it, because we believe the council's directed us to make sure that that project has happened. So, all right, in accordance with, with policy, so we design to standards that we believe have been set by the city council. So, that hopefully provides some information on how staff starts designing these projects, when they do appear before you to authorize them to bid, how they get to that point.
All right, seeing none. Let's go to roll call, then, on Resolution 23-5.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnall?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
All right, thank you. Next is Ordinance 1251. Misty, can you read that, ordinance, please?
Ordinance 1251.
This is a second reading, by the way.
Ordinance 1251, amending City Code Chapter 505, peace and good order, and creating Section 505-8, sale and possession of electronic smoking devices.
All right, is there any questions tonight? Anything from staff? All right, so that was the second reading of Ordinance 1251. We'll have our third reading at the next meeting, and we'll have a vote on that. All right, recommendations for future agenda, agendas. Yes?
Something that's been on my mind with our EMS decision and other things is to, to ask the staff to work on one of our strategic items, which is the fee, our fees, and the fee schedule updates, if we want to be able to have some flexibility, to be able to afford, you know, the pay plan, you know, some of the things in the pay plan, or hiring a new person, or the additional costs that we may incur with an EMS contract. I just want to make sure that our fees are competitive and proper with, you know, what other communities are doing. And I know Mr. Wilkie had worked on something a couple of years ago, you know, with staff, and some sections have maybe been updated and others not, but just in the next few months, I think before the next budget, that would be another piece of, companion piece, I think, to the pay plan, is let's make sure our fees are, you know, in line, and that we're charging the right amount for the services we provide.
Anything else? Sandy Beach was an item that we got feedback on. I know that Mr. Daly's had some, some meetings with some of the proposals that were out there, and that's something we need to bring back to council here, and either form a work session on that topic, or bring it up as an agenda item in a council meeting. So, we can have some discussions on that, and see which way to go with that, but it's something we need to focus on here in the near future. Okay. Anything else? All right, thank you. Meeting's adjourned, 8:35.